Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Select Board meeting Tuesday, February 20th, 2024. Wacoit Meeting Room, Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. 02649. Broadcast live on the local cable channel eight. Stream live on the Town of Mashpee website. And the meeting is six thirty and like to convene the meeting in open session. Can I start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, united, sovereign, just as we are.
Can I also have a moment of silence, please? Thank you. Minutes, discussion and approval of the following minutes, Monday, February 12th, 2024, regular session.
I didn't see any in the packet.
Okay.
Motion to table to the next meeting.
I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Appointments and hearing, six thirty-five. Carol, if you may?
Pursuant to the Town of Mashpee General by law, subsection 150-6.D. The Select Board will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, February 20th, at six thirty-five to address the part private and public road conversion of Christopher Lane in Mashpee, Mass. as shown on the plans entitled "Road Taking Plan, Christopher Lane," dated January 26, 2024, and prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering. Said hearing will take place in the Wacoit Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass. 02649. Copies of the plan may be viewed at the Office of the Town Manager and Select Board, Mashpee Town Hall.
So is it anybody?
Catherine?
Catherine? She's so excited to come up and...
Good evening. So this is a petition article. So this is the second step in the process. The residents or property owners on Christopher Lane had petition. The project had been put on hold just because we weren't sure about the timing of the wastewater project. As you all know, this is part of, I think, what we're calling Phase 1A, which will be moving forward this spring. So we're expediting this to coordinate with that project if the property owners want to move forward. And the estimate that was prepared is based on the assumption that it would be coordinated with the wastewater project. So as you can see, there are certain work items that are indicated by others. As you know, milling and paving of all of the roads where the collection system is being placed is concluded as part of the wastewater project. But there are drainage improvements that would need to be done, and we would coordinate to get that done before that final milling and paving with the collection system. So I believe the notice that was sent out to the property owners indicated that they had a deadline to return this second petition if they did want to move forward with the project.
So again, it's, this is in keeping with if they go forward with the pipes in the ground, this would work in conjunction with the project?
Correct, yes.
That's nice. All right.
Motion, anybody from the audience?
Yeah, is there anybody from the audience that wants to speak? It's either road taking? Okay.
Make motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing any? David?
One question I have is, like, how many people are on the road proportionately? You know, whereas the petition article, like, how many folks are for, supporting it that live on the road that are gonna be affected by it?
So there are seven property owners that would be impacted. To move it forward, it would need to be a majority. So more than 50%. I'm not sure how many submitted, signed the original petition.
But it had to be the majority to go forward?
To go ahead with the petition.
To move forward, all right. Gotcha. Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Yes. And I'm a yes.
Now a motion to approve the project.
That was just the hearing.
Yes.
I'm not sure. I know it was scheduled for six thirty-five. It just became six thirty-five. Just don't know if there's anybody that came in just a minute ago that wanted to speak to Christopher.
On Christopher Lane?
On Christopher Lane.
Were you here to speak to Christopher Lane?
We live on Christopher Lane, but I'm just here to see what's going on.
Are you in favor of?
Yes, absolutely.
Then, then, then? Yes. If you're in favor of, then? Okay. Anybody else just walked in? Thanks, Wayne, for that. I forgot, we're a couple of minutes ahead of schedule. So do we, looking for a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
All right, Carol?
For?
Second.
No, we don't need a motion to approve?
Okay.
We're all good.
Thank you.
Okay. So it's still early for that one. Presentation and discussion, the possible approval of the Veterans Banner proposal for?
It might take a little longer.
Yeah, it might. Discussion approval of authorizing Town Manager to sign Community Development Block Grant documents on behalf of the Select Board.
We can do that?
Actually, we don't need anything. You're just looking for?
Motion to authorize the Town Manager to sign a Community Development Block Grant on behalf of the Select Board.
Second.
All right. I refer us in a second. Any discussion? It's an easy one?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Carol? And I'm a yes.
Good.
You know what? Anybody from public comment?
I think we do.
Okay. Talia Landry for public comment.
Hello. Did I say my address? Talia Landry, 70 Cape Drive, Mashpee. So I just wanted to come today because I did the citizen's petition back in October to do the article that was passed. We, the chairman of the tribe told, or corresponded with the Town Manager to let him know about the task committee that was formed around it and the intent behind that to do different research and communication conversation with the different town employees, specifically the Town Manager and other, you know, departments that it might affect and how we can, you know, partner, how it would look, what is possible, what isn't possible. So when it came to the decisions, you know, for the each board to make a position on what they would want to do, they have as much information as possible. So the chairman will be officially sending that correspondence and the resolution to accompany what formed the committee. We already let the Town Manager know of the people that are on that committee. So if we reached out, right now, we're not getting any feedback from any of the town employees because they're being stopped by the Town Manager's office. So we just, I just wanted to come as a resident to say the intent behind the committee, as I said, is to talk and have conversations. So you need to have all the information to make a position before it gets to the table. So that's what the committees are, or the committee and hopefully have the discussions with the Town Manager, since that's your employee, to conversate certain, you know, this, the information around these certain decisions. And so you can also get feedback from the residents of Mashpee as we're gonna do information slash input sessions. But that's what I wanted to come as a resident to let everybody know because it seems like we're not getting any feedback. I'm not sure how long an appraisal takes or how long these certain conversations take to be able to start happening, but it's prolonging the process. And there's a lot of intent behind the council and the Native Nation to begin, you know, this programming in the springtime and to really base our programming off of the year and the seasons that we can. So I just wanted to let everybody know that. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I mean...
I think it's important. I know that we don't generally respond to public comments, but I just want to clarify that we did have a meeting and it was what I thought was a productive one. And tribal council was there. General counsel for the town was there. General counsel was waiting for feedback specifically from tribal council. And when I say council lawyer, there is a lot of information that Town Council is delving into regarding deed restrictions and so on and so forth. This is a work in progress. Nothing is being held up in terms of our end, but we have to have accurate information in which to go from.
And I refer that to the Tribes Council, and they're not waiting for anything from Tribes. The Town Council isn't waiting for anything for Tribes Council, and all of it would have to do the title search and deed restrictions is all comes from the Town's Council because that would be in your possession. So feedback on that and how we can work around certain things, as well as the intent of the village and boundaries and sort of compromises and things should be talked about before you guys make a decision on anything because there's really only been one presentation for like 15 minutes to really know the project. So it just seems like there needs to be a lot more conversations happening.
I'm always willing to have a conversation.
All right. Thank you, Talia.
Thank you.
Drafts. Wow. Does anybody see anything else we can jump to? But?
We've got about four minutes.
Updates?
Liaison reports?
Liaison reports? Stuff like that.
Yeah, I guess. Michaela, do you have any liaison reports?
I don't.
I have one. Actually, via Michaela. Thank you, Michaela. So there was opening day reception for Who We Are Project of the Mashpee Public Schools, and it was supported by the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. And the Who We Are Project opened Saturday, February 17th, at the Ktuit Center for the Arts. It's the opening day, it was the opening day presentation. It included the history of the project, student art work, images, and Mashpee High School singers. It was very well attended. The entire upper floor of the Ktuit Center is dedicated to the project, which features stories, individuals, and families who immigrated to this area from many different countries. Photographs and interviews and written descriptions are the work, and the work of the Mashpee High School students. The exhibit is free to the public and open until March 15th at the Ktuit Center for the Arts, and it is a tribute to the community and the school. And that's it for me. Anybody else for?
No, I'm good.
David?
No.
All right. Liaison reports. One minute. Any simple water quality updates?
Water quality? You all signed the IMA for Wacoit Bay at our last meeting, the Wacoit Watershed. And I have reached out to both Valmath and Sandwich to make arrangements to either get to their Select Boards or Town Hall to get signatures from them.
Okay, great. As you said, Carol, it's good to be, yeah, we're close enough.
Yep. Pursuant to the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138, Subsection 16A, the Select Board acting as the local licensing authority for the Town of Mashpee will conduct a public hearing on alcoholic beverages license application of Mashpee Fish Market, Fresh Market, LLC, 32 Market Street, Mashpee, Mass. 02649. Megan A. Burdick, manager for Transfer of License Number 00085-PK-0670. Said hearing will be held on Tuesday, February 20th, 2024, at 6:45 PM in the Wacoit Meeting Room at Mashpee Town Hall, 16 Great Neck Road North, Mashpee, Mass.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Attorney Christopher Crane, representing Mashpee Fresh Market LLC. With me tonight is Megan and Seth Burdick. Megan is the owner and manager, her husband Seth with her tonight. What we are asking for the Board tonight is a transfer of an existing license. That license is currently held by Darby's Natural Markets. I'll see, this is the Rory's Organic Market in Mashpee Commons. They are, you know, going out of business basically, and my clients are going to be assuming the lease and taking over that space, assuming that we are able to secure the transfer of the liquor license. Some of you may know Megan and Seth, they do have a presence in Mashpee. They own a Pompanes, the Pompaneset Market, and they've been a successful, you know, business here in town and no issues with that location. And so I think they're well suited to, you know, continue to operate a, this new business in town. So, you know, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I think it's, you know, pretty straightforward. There isn't gonna be many changes to what was there and existing. If there's any, you know, questions for them, you know, certainly they're here to answer it. But, you know, again, they do have a presence in Mashpee. They do operate an existing market in Pompaneset, which has been successful without any issue. And we think that they're more than well qualified to also operate, you know, this location in Mashpee.
I got it. Are you going to continue to operate Pompaneset?
Yes.
That you're gonna operate both locations?
It's only seasonal Pompaneset.
Gotcha. I didn't see any.
No, I didn't see any.
Have any questions?
I guess for me, I was just wondering, like, the, there's another market, like, not too far away, and so I'm just wondering how it may impact others, another establishment that's within close proximity. That's kind of my only concern, really.
Well, I would always say that the existing location had a liquor license that was granted by the Board, so I don't know if that, the location that you're talking about existed at that time or not, but, you know, there wasn't a concern when both, you know, markets had, were granted liquor license by the town. You know, I think, you know, Seth and Megan, I think, think they can operate it successfully with the license, even if there is another market, you know, or else they wouldn't, you know, necessarily get involved. But, you know, there have been, you know, as I say, two liquor licenses at, you know, locations.
I'm fine. That was the only thing I was worried about.
Anybody in the audience want to speak? For or against?
A motion to? A motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
First and second, any discussion? Not hearing any? David? Close the public hearing?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes.
And a motion to grant? The alcoholic beverage license application for the Mashpee Fresh Market LLC, 32 Market Street, Mashpee.
Okay.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? Not hearing any? David?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes.
Great, thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you, have a good night.
Can I say it's probably one of the fastest on-time started hearings ever? Presentation and discussion. Of possible approval of the Veterans Banner proposal for Mashpee Community Park. Rich, come on up.
You get the whole creation up?
That's good.
Thank you.
There you go.
How you doing, Richard? Good.
So they're putting you to work. You're not, you're not doing the work at the transfer station, so they're putting you to work in other ways. See that? I see how it is.
Can't keep a good man down.
See? They reeled you in.
Richard DeSauga, 65, Shields Road. Mr. Chairman, we're undertaking a project that will culminate in the displaying of banners around Community Park here in Mashpee. These banners will display a photo, you have a copy of that, and information about the many military veterans who live or used to live in Mashpee. You might have seen banners like these in other communities. Each banner will highlight one veteran and be displayed on the lampposts around Community Park. With a total of 20 lampposts in the park and using two veteran banners for each side of the pole, a total of 40 veterans will be honored. Mashpee Historical Commission has formed a subcommittee made up of veterans, town officials, community members, who have devoted their time and efforts to honor our veterans and want to make this project a reality. So first, some questions you may have. First, who's on the subcommittee? Subcommittee is made up of Norman Dias and Jack Gardner, who are here today from the Mashpee VFW, also Shirley Oakley from the VFW Ladies Auxiliary, Cynthia Jones from Heroes in Transition, and I want to thank Carol for getting us in touch with her, an amazing person. And veteran and community member Larry Chrome, who's also very active with the Southport Veteran Group, and then myself and Chair Ava Costello with the Mashpee Historical Commission. So why Community Park? Many towns place their banners on telephone poles on town streets. It was our views that cars driving by cannot appreciate or often see the names or photos on the banners due to the speed of the cars. By having the banners in Community Park, town residents can then park and then walk the walkways inside the park, making it for a nice destination. That would also include the Veterans Garden and the 25 Honor Stones honoring those veterans who gave their lives in time of war. And then they can walk over to the new veteran monument and the names of the 252 Mashpee veterans who served during time of war. Both Wayne Taylor and myself contacted members of the Community Park Committee and received support for the banner program. Then you might ask, how will we pay for the project? Good question. We will undertake a fundraising effort by reaching out to the Chamber of Commerce and the business community in Mashpee. We made the decision not to charge the veterans themselves who will be on the banners. They have sacrificed already, and we felt it important that we honor them and have the business community and the public step up and show support for the banner program. We will be sending out 150 letters to the businesses seeking their monetary support, no matter how small or large. These contribute, these, those contributing larger sums, becoming a sponsor, will have their names on a banner that we place on the back part of the Archives Building facing the park while the banners are on display. The money will be deposited in the Historical Commission's revolving account under the subtitle Veteran Banners. The funds will be used to obtain and print the banners and obtain the necessary hardware. By using the Town DPW, unfortunately Catherine just left, we will be able to install them at no additional cost. While our DPW Director Catherine said that her department would put the banners up and take them down, she also noted that more and more jobs keep being put on the DPW plate, but they will do the best they can, but her point is well taken of how much we depend upon our DPW. The estimated cost of the banners is $4,500. The banners are three feet by two, vinyl in material, with air holes in them to combat windy weather. We are flexible on the dates that the banners will be up, but we're suggesting that they be in the park from August to Thanksgiving, and that would include Veterans Day. The Mashpee VFW has stated they can help with some limited seed money, and the Historical Commission has limited funds also available if there is a shortfall in our fundraising efforts. Now, next question. When the banners are not up, can other banners be put up in the hardware on the poles? Well, the answer is yes. There is always a possibility, such as American flag banners or holiday-related banners during holiday times, but that's a discussion for another day for the Community Park Commission and for the Select Board. Next question. What if more than 40 veterans want to participate? Well, in that event, we will use a lottery system with the first 40 names drawn going on the banners. We anticipate this being an annual event, so those names not drawn in the initial lottery will be placed on banners for the next year. We would continue the lottery system until eventually recycling existing banners to be put up again in future years. What veterans can participate? Well, any veteran who honorably served and who currently lives in Mashpee or used to live in Mashpee is eligible. Unlike the names on the new law memorial, where you had to have enlisted from Mashpee, the banner program is open to any veteran who currently calls or at some point called Mashpee Home, no matter where they enlisted from. You asked how many veterans, how will the veterans sign up for the program? Thanks to the support of Kathy Mahoney in the Town Library, the box that you see back there that Jack will bring up will be placed on the front desk of the library. Attached with it are the forms needed to participate. Individuals will then also have to email a high-quality photo to the Historical Commission email address. The box will be at the library during library hours from March 1 until April 1. It was the view of the Community Park, it was the view of Community Park and Select Board Member Carol Sherman that our first step should come here with this presentation before this Board to obtain your permission. So here we are this evening, asking for you to give us a go-ahead, unless there's further things any of the members here want to say as well.
I'll start it off. I, you know, I love this, and I'm impressed you actually answered all my questions. First question, second question, third question. I'm like, now I have nothing to ask. So, thanks, Rich. Yeah, I know, I, I think it's great. I know we've been, it's been tossed about, talked about, you know, the day is, it's here. It's, I mean, this has been in years in discussion, so this is great. So, does anybody?
No, he answered all the questions.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the Historic Commission's Veteran Banner Program.
Second.
I have first and second, any discussion? Let's go, say. Well done. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'll call to a vote?
Yes.
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 Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good work, as usual.
Thank you very much. Great work.
Thank you.
Always impressed.
Yeah, then we can go, then we can go to the draft, right?
Yep.
Town Manager updates?
There will be an operational meeting on February 29th with GHD relative to Phase Two. So I've respectfully requested a special joint meeting between the Select Board and the Sewer Commission Wednesday, March 6th. I think everybody here is aware of it, but I just want to make sure that the audience knows. And also, the Town of Mashpee invites the public to review the Housing Production Plan Update. The comment period is February 20th through March 11th, and anybody that would like to comment is welcome to go to the site through the Planning Department.
And you said that joint meeting Sewer Commission was March 6th again?
March 6th.
I just wanted, just for the record, because the doors were closing.
And that is on a Wednesday, as a result of early voting in Super Tuesday. That's why it's a Wednesday. And we wanted to make sure that it was done as quickly as possible so that we can get the information out for Town Meeting. So March 6th is our earliest date, given the restrictions that we're under.
Got it.
I believe everybody here is all set with March 6th.
Yes.
Anyone, any other questions?
The comment period for the LCP ends when? Again?
That ends on March 11th.
March 11th.
I just went out today.
Yes. Yes.
Good. Awesome. Thank you. Jump right into the first look and draft of town meeting warrants. There are, if we can kind of, we can kind of scan through them, if we can get a few.
Done, would be good.
Yeah, off the table.
Article two, we have.
Yeah, so Article one is, we're missing, we're waiting on. Article two, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $864.05 in revenue available appropriation to pay the previous fiscal year's unpaid bill as follows. Does anybody have any questions with that, or can I, so we'd be looking for a?
A motion to approve and?
And recommend.
And recommend.
So I have a motion to approve and recommend Article two.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and I have a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Four to zero in favor for Article two.
Two, three, two.
Article three, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $2,629, oh, no, $2,600, $2,629,134 from revenue available appropriation to be deposited into the Capital Stabilization Fund or take any other action relating thereto. Sorry about that.
A motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and recommend Article three as written. Any questions, discussion? Not hearing any. David?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Four to zero on Article three. I think Article four, we can look at too, right? So Article four, on page two, is to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $370,000 from the revenue available for appropriation to the Human Resources accrued benefit account or take no other relation, no other action relating thereto.
Motion to approve and recommend?
Second.
All right, I have first and a second to approve and recommend Article four. Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Article five? Article five relates to, I believe wastewater, correct?
Yes.
Would it be okay to move forward with that? There's no, okay?
Well, it has, it has the?
Has the amount.
It does have the amount.
It has the amount, but then it has, right after, amount to be determined, so I'm a little?
That's what I was confused about, because it does say 1.4.
Yeah.
And then it does say amount to be determined, except because we?
Terry has her hand up.
It just got determined?
That was the, that number in there was what the treasurer?
Okay, so that, so the amount is filled in as 1.4. So Article five is for consideration, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $1,400,000 from the Wastewater Stabilization Fund to the temporary borrowing outside 2.5 or take any other action relating thereto.
Motion to approve and recommend.
All right, that's a first and?
Second.
I just, I just have a question. What's the balance in that account?
The stabilization account? I don't know, but I can get it for you.
Don't know off the top of my head, but we'll get the exact figure.
Does that make a difference on your?
No, I think it's important to know the balance in that account and also in the, not to go on to Article six, but also the balance in the WIF.
In the WIF, yeah.
We'll get both.
Thank you.
So are you looking to, want to hold off on, is that what you're saying?
Motion to hold?
I'd like, particularly, I'd like to hold.
Well, we already have a motion at first and a second, so.
I'm fine with that one going forward.
Okay. All right, so, Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So Article five is a four to zero, yes. So were you looking to maybe, to hold off on six? Is that just to get to?
I think it's important for us to know the balance in those accounts, and we've voted on five, and I think that's fine. I'd like us to know the balance on six as we're making decisions. I think that's important. I don't have an issue with it, but I think we should know what the balance in the account is.
Just disclose, yeah, sure.
Thank you.
I think it would be, as a standard of practice, to Michaela's point, if we add it in the?
In the article?
In the article, with the balances.
That's a good idea. I don't, I don't see a reason why we can't.
Is there a problem with that?
You can get your balance anytime you want.
Can we add it to the article?
We don't put it in the article.
Just for?
I can tell you what, I can get you the information of what's in the account and get it to you. There's no problem there. I know that they're using the combined funds to try to help from having to go into a borrowing situation.
Right.
So by using these funds that were allocated for this purpose, that's why they went this way. So I know there's enough funds in there for both of this, or it wouldn't be here by dawn, but knowing the balance is not a problem. We can certainly get you the balance.
So we can, we can go ahead with Article six, because we're going to transfer the sum of 1.6. They've already, she's already agreed.
The reason, right.
The amount is there to borrow, to transfer, so that's all it is.
The reason, the reason I'm asking is, I'm thinking back to our discussion about how that was going to be funded. I didn't remember that this was the way it was going to be funded. I don't oppose it being funded in this way. I just would like, I'd like to have more information.
You were originally okay to fund it through a borrowing, through a borrow. So this way, we're avoiding having to borrow money. We can pay this off without having to borrow the money.
No, and I understand that. As I said, it's just, it's slightly different than what we were presented with and voted on and agreed to and voted on in, before we went to town meeting in October. And for that reason, I think it would be important to know what the balances are in the accounts, how that, how that impacts the WIF and how that impacts us moving forward. I just think it's useful information to have, and I think it brings us to transparency. I'm not opposing either of these.
And to the selectwoman's point, I don't want to confuse voters in terms of what it is that we are doing and when we're doing it and how we're doing it. So I would suggest that you put this on hold.
Simple, yep. It's already written down.
And I know that the reason for that is so we don't pay interest on loans borrowed, so we can continue to, and the WIF is going to be continuing to build as we go, so.
Right.
Could you, just from my own personal insight, wastewater infrastructure investment fund comes from the WIF. Wastewater stabilization fund comes from?
From the motel hotel taxes and those additional taxes that we have there.
Got you.
We have 75% of those being allocated directly to wastewater.
And we want to get you the exact amount.
I don't have the exact amount, I wouldn't.
I had it the other day, and I don't specifically recall.
Because I don't know how many years ago that was, but from that hotel motel tax, David, we actually have, 75% is allocated directly to wastewater.
Goes right into wastewater.
So.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was Article six on hold. Seven, Article seven on page three, to see if the town will vote and appropriate and transfer with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44B, Section Six, to reserve from the Community Preservation Fund budget for appropriation reserve in the following amounts. $1,096, 10% open space recreation purposes, $1,096, 10% historic purposes, and $1,096, 10% affordable housing purposes, or take no other action relating thereto.
Motion to approve and recommend Article seven.
Second.
I have first and a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. David?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes. Article eight relates to, is it CPC? Yep. To see if the town will vote, on Article eight, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of, not to exceed $100,000 from the Community Preservation Fund budget for appropriation reserve to accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, 44B, Section Five, for the purpose of funding the open space and recreational plan, including necessary costs and expenses relating thereto or as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action relating thereto.
Motion to approve and recommend Article eight.
All right, first and a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Ah, Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Four to zero, yes. Article nine, I don't think there's any problem with going forward with that, right? Article nine on page four, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $550,000 from the Community Preservation Fund, 10% open space recreational reserve in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44B, Section Five, for the purpose of funding a Schumett Pond restoration rehabilitation project, including necessary costs and expenses relating thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, and to apply for, apply for, accept and expend any reimbursement funds which have anticipated from the Joint Base Cape Cod 50% through the Environmental Services Agreement to defray the costs. All reimbursement funds would return to the coffers of the Community Preservation Committee and further to authorize a Select Board and/or Community Preservation Committee to enter into all agreements and execute, and execute any and all instruments on behalf of the town as may necessarily, necessary to affect this purchase and obtain reimbursement funding in the best interest of the town or take any other action relating thereto.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Respectfully request that the board take no action on this this evening. There may be some rewording that has to be done by counsel based on the initial review.
Okay. Is it good enough to put a hold on that one?
Do you, do you know what kind of is the issue that stands out?
Yeah, what the issue is, that if you read this article, you're led to believe that the base is going to pay 50% of this back. And what, what, while that may be true, and they may end up giving the 50%, it's, they don't have it in their budget now. Their budget for next time, next year, is where they're planning on taking the other 50% from. So I don't want to mislead the public into believing that we're getting 50% back right away. I'd like to word it so that we have, we know that that money is likely to come next year, but not this year, so that's.
That's good enough for me. You got that? Is that right? Just a clarification?
Yeah, now I recall that conversation.
Okay. All right, so that was Article nine. We're going to hold on that one. Article 10. And we got to hold on that, and that's rotating, right?
No, this is the purchase of land through CPC.
Oh, okay.
We don't have the amount.
Yeah, we don't have the amount anyway, so, so we go to, ooh.
That's the end of the special.
That's the end of the special. So Article one on page seven, to see if the town will vote to accept reports of the town officers or take any other action relating thereto.
A motion to accept and recommend.
All right, this is?
Second.
First and a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. David?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, we're getting to a lot more than I was thinking. All right, Article two on page seven, to see if the town will vote to fix the salaries?
I'm going to respectfully request no action on that.
It's the budget?
Oh, gotcha. And?
I'm probably through, Tom.
Yeah, Article five?
Two, three. Do you want to hold off on three also?
Same, same for the reasons you are familiar with.
Yeah, jumped right to four, I think, right? It involves tech school?
Yep.
And those, those numbers are final, right, from the tech school?
That's right.
So Article four is to see if the town will vote to approve the annual regional school district budget for the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, in the amount of $12,694,000, and further to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,142,273 to meet its share of cost and appropriation of the maintenance of Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, or take no other action relating thereto.
A motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
All right, first and a second, and under discussion, I, I know this is, I mean, definitely a, I'm a advocate for the technical school. It's a lot of money, you know, it's, unfortunately, I don't, there's not much control we have over it, so we have representation on their committee. It's just, you know, it seems like everything just seems to cost more and more, and.
I mean, there's five more students, so it is.
Yeah, that's, it is one of this.
I think we added five or six, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, the article says five.
So, I get, I get it, this is under discussion, but I have a motion. Any other discussion? Just wanted to go on the record. Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. That's 14, page 15. Article five, I believe it also relates to the tech school, to see if the town will vote to approve the regional, regional school district debt assessment for the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District Building Project for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, in the amount of, and further to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate, the sum, the appropriate, the sum, all right, I think we'll type on there, but, the sum of $476,292 to meet its share of the cost debt for the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District Building Project for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, or take any other action relating thereto.
Motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
I have a first and a second twice. Any other discussion? All in favor, David?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Request the next one to be held, Mr. Chair.
Article six is, yep, that's the big one we're waiting for, right?
Yes, sir.
Article seven on page 16, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $250,000 from revenue available for appropriation to the other post-employment benefits irrevocable trust fund, or take any other action relating thereto.
Motion to approve and recommend Article seven.
All right, a motion and a second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Michaela?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Article eight, I believe we can, Article eight on? Article eight on page sixteen also, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer a sum of $250,000 from revenue available for appropriation to be deposited into the Special Injury Leave Indemnity Fund, Injured on Duty Fund, in accordance with the provisions of General Law, Chapter 41, Section 111F, for the purposes of funding injury leave compensation and medical bills incurred under said law, or take any other action relating thereto.
Motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
All right, first and second, any discussion? Not hearing any. Michaela.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Carol?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
We can do nine.
So, Mr. Callis, can you just, public safety technician, can you just explain, because I'm guessing that some people, the public may ask that same question. I looked at this article as, as if I've never heard this in discussion before, and public safety technician...
Yes, it's an IT person. Previously, we had a dispatcher who also served a dual role. The dispatcher's position was not filled, and that person retired. And now, we want to essentially transfer that position from PD to IT, and have that person specifically assigned to the PD and to the fire department, serving under the IT director.
So he's... So he's IT?
The former position before retirement was dispatch supervisor slash IT, but the person was a dispatcher.
Okay.
That position was not filled. The person retired. And now, we want to transfer that position, the old position, over to IT, and have that individual housed at the PD to take care of the IT system, but also walk across the lawn to the fire department and take care of that person as well. The reason why this is being recommended is because of the pressing need with their service at both fire and police.
Okay, so that basically the dispatch, the old dispatcher position was transferred and is now an IT position supporting police and fire.
If you approve this, that's what's going to happen.
That's basically what it is. So it's not a new position. It's just a transfer of an old position to a new...
It's technically a new position, but in terms of what used to exist versus what could potentially exist, it's almost a wash.
Okay.
A motion to approve and recommend.
All right, I have a motion. Any, I have a second.
Second.
All right, I have a first and a second. Any discussion?
I, I have a, I have a question. So, prior, prior to this, this was a part-time position?
No, it was full-time.
Okay, so the dispatcher was, the dispatcher was actually doing this, not the work of a dispatcher?
It was a combination of both.
Right.
Dispatch supervision in addition to the IT work. Based on the retirement and the analysis of the job duties and general functions, it was determined that the need really is in IT, which shouldn't be intertwined necessarily with dispatch.
Okay, thank you.
So how do we, how do we, if I may?
Yeah, yeah.
Sure. How do we, because what I'm hearing is, it was, it was a position, it's kind of, it's kind of transferred the scope of work to now, it's something a little bit different than what it once was. So how do we come to the grade nine, step three designation in the hiring of that? Like, how do we justify that?
The grade is determined based on the job task analysis and the duties that would be incumbent upon that individual, and we give ourselves flexibility to start at step one, two, or three, and that's been common practice.
So I, I guess, to minimize expense, I was wondering if there's flexibility to kind of have a range, you know, so, so we're not committing to the highest.
Oh, I...
You know, that, that part was...
I don't ever necessarily want to pay the highest. I think there's plenty of history there, but on the other hand, you've got to have some flexibility to determine, based on the person's knowledge, skills, and abilities, and based on their education, training, and experience, you have to have the flexibility, or otherwise, you're boxing yourself in. I can assure you that we're not necessarily going to pay step three, but on the other hand, if that's all we have, and the person is competent and qualified, then it's nice to have that flexibility, so the position isn't vacant, and then you don't have anybody. It all depends on the pool.
Qualify candidate, right.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
And I just think it's important to know, I think it's important to know, and I just don't know the answer to this. What does a public safety technician do? What are they responsible for in most departments?
It's like a desktop technician in IT. We're calling it public safety because that person would be assigned to the fire department and the police department compared to town hall. But the person would, would serve under the IT director, even though they're housed at the PD and at the fire department, because that's where they would be doing their work.
Okay. I guess I asked that question because one thing that's come up a lot is having another tech, technician at town hall to be updating information here with keeping the webpage current, ensuring that, for example, we went through with, with the sewer commission pages and people trying to find that. So I guess the question's related to, and I just didn't understand what the need or the roles were. I'm not saying they're not there. I'm just trying to understand what the need in those two departments are, as opposed to the need for public information through the town.
The public information through the town will be helped out because that, we're not sending our people over there to do that work that they, that the technician wasn't there to do. The technician also takes care of all those computers, all of the computers that they have on the, on the cars or in the units, so, fire units. So all of those are necessary, and when you keep taking our guy to go over and help that out, then we're not able to do the stuff that we need to on our own webpages and our own information in the house.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thanks.
But just to follow up on that, this is actually a great question, because he's still working for the Director of IT.
It is.
So if, if he needs help, help with the website or something, he just would, he would just be over there and say, hey, when you get some time, he's still working for the department here. It's not like he can't do anything but police and fire.
The former, the former position, if this was approved, was specifically in the PD. This position, again, if approved, would be in IT, but primarily assigned to the police and fire based on the need, because what we're finding is what the assistant just articulated. We're sending people up there in a car, and that takes more time than just having the person there and figuring the problem out and resolving it in-house. And they just have greater demand now than they used to.
And plus, you're going to use them for the fire, too, so it's...
Yes.
So how, how does, how does the proportionately, which budget supplements the salary? Like, how is that determined? Because it says public safety.
Yeah, it all comes...
But it doesn't distinguish between police or fire, who's responsible?
It all comes out of IT, but again, the person is assigned to police and fire, if that makes sense. It would be similar to somebody being paid for out of a department here, but going up to recreation or going wherever. I understand it can be confusing, but the person is, again, if approved, an employee of IT. And again, it was a little creative, because we're, we're going with one less dispatcher. It's a matter of prioritizing.
Is it, would it be appropriate to add something about, or any other town IT?
No, it's not necessary.
It's still under, it's, okay, I, I trust you if you say it's not necessary. It doesn't, again, he does report to the IT, so you have whatever he needs done.
That's right.
That's...
Be under the job description.
Okay. So we, we do a motion, and we have first and second.
David, you have a second.
Michaela.
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, that was Article nine. Article 10 is wastewater assistant, I believe.
Yes.
This would be a new position for the superintendent. This is a position for the purpose of assisting him facilitate everything. And after speaking with our engineers, after speaking with our superintendent, after knowing what the job is going to entail and the requirements, the technical requirements that this person is going to have to stay on top of, given what we have invested and will continue to invest, we've got to have the support staff. So this is more important than any of your positions that you're reviewing, in my view.
Where would this, and this would...
This is a new position.
And when would this, perfect world, would this not be until we get closer to online?
Good, good question. So if you approve this, the position would be funded, and it would be ready to go July 1st of 2024. It is fair for you to assume that if we don't need the position July 1st, 2024, I will not be filling it. All you're doing is authorizing me to fill it, and so when the superintendent comes to me and says, okay, flow is going January 1st, we're online July 1st, a year later, when he comes to me and says, I need that position, whatever that critical timeline is, I'm good to go. I'm not...
Scrambling.
I'm not coming to you for a special meeting.
Would this person, I'm sorry, sorry. Would this person, where would this person be called home or in office?
With, with the superintendent.
So would that be here, or would that be depending upon...
Well, right now, it's here, but there is the possibility that that will be at the plant.
Okay. Sorry, David.
I believe it's a squibness, error, unless I'm mistaken. So on Article 10, under the third, third line, line up from the bottom of the paragraph, $77,591 to the Information Technology Department, is that actually, is that...
That's, you are paying attention, sir. Good catch. That is an error.
Thought we were doubling down on the...
No. Selectman Whedon is reading. That is an error, sir.
Well, I didn't, I didn't even read it yet, so...
That's...
Yeah, he hasn't read that.
Well, he caught it. That's, that's a, that's an error.
I saw IT.
Another question I had is, so how does the Personnel Administrative Plan work? Is that something that, like, comes before, have we, have you presented on that? Do we see that, or is that something that's just done internally?
Actually, that's a work in progress as a result of administrators A and B being decertified, so you're going to be getting that shortly.
No, this, yeah, that's all I had, was just wondering. I saw it referenced a couple of times here, so I was wondering how that works.
And you do approve PAP at the same time you do the unions.
Union, too.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yep. But there is a revision coming your way.
Got you. That's all I had.
Do you want a motion to approve?
So, yeah, motion.
To approve and recommend.
Article 10 with the noted correction.
Second.
Any other questions?
No, yes.
Michaela. Carol?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So Article 10 is four to zero. Article 11, and that is new police officer, I believe. There's no questions in that. That's, that would be final the way it's, way it's printed, correct?
Yep, that is a new position.
And Article 11 is to see if the town will vote to create a permanent, full-time police officer position within the Mashpee Police Department, 40 hours per week, with said position to be classified under the Mass. COP Local 324 Unit A Patrol Officers and Detectives, step one, to be effective July 1st, 2024, and to appropriate and transfer the sum of $132,544 from the revenue available for appropriation with said funds to be distributed as follows: $81,435 to the Mashpee Police Department Police Salaries Account, $1,181 to the Medicare Account, $30,113 for the town portion of the health insurance, and $35 for the town portion of life insurance, and $19,780 to the Vanspo County Retirement, or take any other action relating thereto.
Now, this is the first time we've added a police officer in how many years?
I believe at least 20.
Yeah. So that's amazing.
So, motion to approve and recommend Article 11.
Second.
All right, first and second, under discussion. Yeah, I'm not, obviously, above the police and fire, as always. It just, anytime you have to bring on a, you know, a new body, if you will, it's, it's always going to be scrutinized, and, but when it comes down to safety, it's kind of hard to, and what did you say, 20 years?
20 years.
That's...
I know, I've been there.
And our population has...
We've never...
You know, in 20 years, probably doubled. I don't know. Any other discussion? Not hearing any. Michaela.
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, that's 17.
Article 12.
Yeah, Article 12 doesn't look like, doesn't, would that be a problem, right?
No.
Okay. Just trying to scan it in advance. All right, Article 12 at the top of page 18, to see if the town will vote to upgrade one part-time administrative clerk position, 18 hours a week without benefits, to a full-time administrative secretary position within the Mashpee Police Department, with said position to remain classified under the Personnel Administrative Plan, Grade Six, Step Three. Grade Six, Step Three, to be effective July 1st, 2024, and to be appropriate, and to appropriate, transfer the sum of $91,986 from revenue available for appropriation in said funds to be distributed as follows. $45,058 to the Mashpee Police Department, Mashpee Police Department Police Full-Time Salary Account, $946 to the Medicare Account, $30,113 for the town's portion of health insurance, and $35 for the town portion of life insurance, and $15,834 to the Vansville County Retirement, or take any other action relating thereto. So.
This, this is because the firearms and the licensing.
The records clerk retired.
Retired.
And instead of having it part-time, their request is to have it full-time. So essentially, there is a backup to processing all of the clerical work within the PD, including but not limited to the complicated payroll system, because of all the shift differentials and things of that nature. So, right now, there is no backup for that. That is.
It is what it is.
Functional. So this would provide them with that system. And also, based on the need of this position, again, this has been put off for a while.
I have a question. So currently, the department is functioning, or was functioning, with one part-time?
With 19, yep, with 19 hours.
Just one 19-hour, okay, thank you.
A motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
First and second, any discussion?
I guess for me, it's, you know, with, just factoring in, like how many positions we're creating, and the cost associated with the new positions, it's kind of, it's a lot. It's kind of a big hit for one year while we're doing the wastewater and everything else. And it causes a little bit of hesitation. I mean, just, just on the fire, I mean, just on the police alone with the, without factoring in the IT, we're up around half a mil, just within that department, I think, close to it. And then, you know, we haven't gotten to the Public Works, Article 13 yet.
Which, we need another maintainer.
It's a lot, just to digest, I guess is my hesitation.
We'd think it's talking about 240,000-ish, like that, between the two positions.
Yeah.
I think it's more than that.
No, I think it's 91, and.
And 130.
Adding all the fringe and everything?
Yeah.
You're above.
It's still a lot, I mean.
It is a lot.
Not to take away from your point, David, I have the same concern, you know, and it's going from part-time to benefits, right? So, so it's, for all intents and purposes, I know it's only increasing a half-position, if you will, but it's, it's another full-time with benefits. And again, you know, I share your concern, in the same way in the last two. And again, this is under discussion, so we have motion and a second. Any other discussion?
How many, how many people are employed at the police department? I'm thinking about the amount of work, more or less. How many full-time employees do we have?
There's 38 officers, and then you've got the dispatchers, animal control officer, so. Oh, I'm sorry, were you talking administration?
No, this is the one-person administration I'm picturing, the work of this person, that's why I was asking.
And then this would be two in that capacity, if this was approved. Right now, there's just a person that was doing the 19-hour per week.
Okay, so this, then I miss.
There's actually two. There's the licensing clerk, which is a separate position, and then there was the records clerk, both of which were 19-hour positions, if that makes sense.
So one retired, and then, so now we're moving one part-time to a full-time.
Under the proposal.
Under the proposal.
And John, just so you folks know, in my standpoint, when I was looking through this, and we were, and the boss and I discussed this heavily, I don't think anyone in this room can realize how important that this position is in the sense of backup. You've got one person doing all the payroll, administrative work, and so on. And I think if she went down, sick, whatever, we're not, I don't want to say desperate, because he would never say we're desperate, but.
You can say it.
But, but I think we're.
If she goes down, we're in trouble.
We're in big trouble with that one. And I just think it makes sense to have someone ready to go. She's a long-term employee and has done a wonderful job for us over the years. But nobody knows the future, obviously, whether somebody gets sick or whether they even retire, I don't know. But I just think we need to be prepared.
She can't do the work part-time. She needs to be there full-time to get it done.
Well, not only to get the work done that's currently there, but to learn the other aspects of the job. I mean, it's a lot there.
I mean, for me, I wish, I wish this one came before the last one.
Oh, with Article 12 before.
In that situation, yeah, I mean, like, you know, it sounds like it's very much justified, where the other one's kind of based on, you know, population, we haven't brought on a new, it's proportionate to your population, and we haven't done it, brought on a new person in 20 years.
Right.
You know, not as strong of argument as this person's been part-time is actually a need to make them full-time, and, you know, is justifiable. Like, the other, the other one, if it's a want and not necessarily a need, I'd prefer putting it off until next year, you know what I mean? So we're not hitting every, the town with so much all at once. I mean, we got, you know, four, I don't know how many others there are, but there's four, four positions or so in here that are kind of new, new positions being created. That does a lot.
Yeah.
With wastewater and everything else going on.
No, 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 and I certainly share your concern. I don't want to make it sound like it's a wish versus a mission-critical item, because they've been trying at my level for a while, and they've heard no. And this is the year that I thought we could try to square away anything in, in terms of personnel, because it looks as though we are potentially looking at an override next year. So I just wanted to try to get us at the staffing level that we need to meet mission-critical services. However, if you were to ask me, and obviously, the chief is not here, but if you were to ask me what is more of a priority right now, that position that you just read is the, is really critical, because it's going to cause, I think, a disruption administratively without it. So if it's one or the other, then I would say this.
I would, I would ask that, like, you know, when we, when we put this forward for a town meeting and things, that this, we resequence it, so this one comes up first.
We can do that.
Just because, I mean, I don't want to hold it up from the town. Like, the town's ultimately, you know, I'm not playing gatekeeper, but, you know, I think the town's going to have the same concerns I have. And I think just hearing folks talk through it, like, this one's way more justified and just, it's necessary, so.
So we can switch Article.
That's not a bad point, I mean.
11 and then switch.
You know, I would defer to the town management and say, okay, if you think any of these new positions are more critical than others, to your point, David, I, I would put those.
First.
First on, so, because I think you're right. I think people, the public's going to look at this and go.
And, and if it wasn't needed, then it wouldn't be in front of you. But on the other hand, I get your point. Where, where do we stop? And where do we say enough is enough? So I think that's a discussion.
I just, my, my support for this position is way stronger than the last one. So, I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to see that come forward first at town meeting. So if we're going to get something, if we're going to get something approved, then let's get that one, just because it's justifiable and necessary. It's kind of mission-critical.
If the board doesn't have any objections with the way they are numbered, then we'll take care of that.
That'd be good.
That'll be on your next agenda.
All right, so we have a first and a second on Article 12. 12. Any further discussion? Kayla?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Motion to reconsider Article 11.
Yeah, to make Article 12, are you going to redo your decision?
If we do, take a vote, another vote, I'm going to change my vote on that one.
See, I wonder, and I guess we could always, we still have time.
You haven't executed tonight.
Yeah, so we're not executing, so, you know.
You have time to, to review it.
And I, you know, to be honest, see, I'd still.
I just want to reflect it in the select board recommends portion that I'm more supportive of this one. So that's why I'm asking for reconsideration of Article 11, just to take another vote, which that one I abstain, because I don't have enough information on it.
When we bring the articles back up.
And then it will be reflected in the.
We're going to get these in new order.
Yeah, what I, what I suggest is that you review them in the new order, and then take the action that you deem appropriate, if you want to reconsider and/or take any other action. Because you haven't executed, and you will not tonight.
The rest of my votes I'm good with, it's just that last one in the sequence and stuff.
And again, I think.
If I'm going to support one.
There's a couple more coming up.
I'm putting my weight behind that one.
There's a couple more coming up.
Ah, jeez, you're killing me.
I think people, I think the board needs to know that we have looked at these time and time again, not just this year, in previous years. And we have had to say no many times to all these positions. And all of these positions, to their departments, they feel they're critical. I think we feel like it's time, at this time, to put these forward to the town and let them decide, and because of the situation, we've had to do. We've tightened our belts so we didn't have to have these overrides for so many years, that at some point, we're just sticking our head in the sand and saying, oh, well, you know, we've got the wastewater, and that's all we can do. This is as important as the wastewater, getting the right number of people on the street, so.
No, I get it.
That's just my two cents, it's not.
No, I mean, I remember the police with a new body being.
The other thing is, believe it or not, you're not receiving all of the positions that were proposed.
I know.
All right, well.
I'm sure.
So that was.
Or I should say requested.
Article 12, which is going to be maybe Article 11 potentially, or swap with Article. So Article 13 regarding a new.
Full-time.
Ready, David? So Article 13, middle of page 18, to see if the town will vote to create one full-time maintainer, one position at the Department of the Public Works, 40 hours per week, SEIU Local 888, DPW Unit B, to be effective July 1st, 2024, to appropriate and transfer the sum of $102,859 from the revenue available for appropriation with said funds to be distributed as follows. $57,190 to the DPW full-time local salary amount, $800 to the DPW operating uniform account, $30,113 to the medical insurance account, and $35 to the group life insurance account, $830 to the Medicare account, and $13,891 to the pension reserve account, or take any other action relating thereto. So, there you have it.
Motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
All right, we have a first and a second, and Mr. Whedon was very quick to.
I know.
Not the grinch. All right, so.
We heard Mr. DeSorge tell us that, like, Catherine's telling us that.
I know.
They keep dumping more work on us, that, yes, we will.
So.
And this was originally two. It was originally two, I knocked it down to one.
I'm reasonable.
So, so we are in the discussion, so we have a motion and a second, but. All right, so I have a bunch of questions on this one. You know, and I, I feel bad, because I know DPW does great job, and they support pretty much every facet of, from the schools to the police, to everything.
And to the pickleball park.
They do everything. I get it, and they do a great job. That being said, it's another new position. What's the reasoning? I mean, what's the benefit? Is it lack of overtime?
No, no, the, the demand is there, and you've taken on more streets, you've taken on more responsibilities, and the list goes on. And I would defer to the DPW director and have her come in in order to defend the request. But in the end, it's a balancing act. And when you take a look at these requests, you try to focus on what exactly is, as Selectman Whedon said earlier, is it a wish, or is it, is it something that's absolutely necessary? The items that are in front of you, I can, I think with credibility, tell you that these are necessary positions. However, having said that, you try to get through what is absolutely mission-critical, and what can we afford? And I think that's the piece that he's hitting, which is always a balancing act, because I don't want things to be jeopardized that we desperately need, whether it be wastewater or anything else. But at the same time, you got to take care of your, your fundamental or your basic level of services that people have come to expect. But anyway, I would defer to the DPW director. But when she came in to make the pitch for two, I think the, the, the work was there. The question became, to Selectman Whedon's point, what is sustainable, affordable, and so on and so forth? So we ended up with one versus two, and I understand that this is all a challenging task for all of us, as far as trying to add any positions, particularly at this time. But I wasn't comfortable at least not bringing it before you, so that you had an opportunity to decide what goes before town meeting. It's your warrant, it's your agenda, these are your articles, and obviously, you can do what you think is prudent.
And so for me, like, you know, the, I want to be fair. So, you know, they're putting forward, we're hearing that, you know, they put forward two. I don't, I don't want to take away.
And now we're giving them one.
Like, knock them down from, because at the end of the day, we just, we just essentially approve police and fire. Between, for police, it's almost three positions, because you're getting an IT person, you know.
But that position exists.
I get it, it exists now, it's transferred, so you're relocating somebody from over here to put them over there, so that there needs a map more. to put them over there, so that there needs a map more consistently. You don't have to drive across town to do it.
Right.
For the IT person. Then we're putting on an extra person, haven't done that in 20 years, I get it, but then we're putting on, you know, going from part-time to full-time, but then we're gonna go tell the DPW no on an ask, they asked for two. I mean, that's where, you know, I feel comfortable putting that forward, you know, I'm not trying to burden any department or program to where people are overworking themselves and getting injured or anything like that, trying to make up the difference. I, the town's grown, and I get that, you know, so I want to be fiscally responsible, but, you know, you know, just reasonable.
How many full-time employees are working there at the DPW under Catherine?
I would have to double-check that number.
I don't want to speak out of turn. I'd say, I'd get a guess, but I don't want to throw that out there so much.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And to that note, actually, I understand what you said, David, and what Michaela's question was just now, as far as how many employees. But, and again, this is not beating on DPW, but it's just new body, new body, new body, and where does it stop? And what's fair is fair, but has DPW grown in employees over the past 20 years?
Well, yes, but I would caution you that when we merged from the school, the custodians, that inherently resulted in a pickup for DPW, but the level of service was still there.
With the exception of that, I'm just saying, because we know we got back.
We picked up a mechanic and maybe one other position, but don't quote me, and I know I'm on recording here, but.
Well, I mean, it's hard to remember. I'm not expecting you to.
Yeah.
All I'm saying is, we could have added over the past 20 years.
I know we added a mechanic.
Couple of full-time employees.
Whether or not there was another one, I would say possibly.
Over what period of time?
I'm talking about 20 years.
Over 20 years? Jeez.
Yeah.
So, it doesn't sound like a whole lot. I mean, when you factor in all the road takings, all the.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Additional spaces that they have to maintain.
I'm just saying, it's the same argument for the police, though.
It said in the explanation, a new position has not been added since FY13. Since that time, the town has accepted 11 more miles of road, constructed five more miles of bike paths, sidewalks, and built the new community park and Veterans Memorial. Also, the dog park, the pickleball park, the splash pad, the community gardens. Another labor position is needed to help perform the essential functions required to maintain the town's infrastructure and to expect the level of service.
And that's why it's in front of you.
That's right.
Thank you for reading that, because I think it makes a compelling argument.
Sure.
And we also approved newer equipment.
Yes.
That they don't have to go out and rent and things like that, so they can be a little bit more efficient.
Both ways.
So, we expended for new equipment that they could be more efficient with less running around and rentals. I'm just, it has to be said, and I get it, and I, it's just so tough.
So, you have a.
Motion, and we already have, and we have a second. Any other discussion? Would the person who made the motion want to withdraw their motion?
No.
Until we can have Catherine come in to explain her support for, I'm just asking?
I just, no, I don't want to.
Okay.
It's.
And in fairness, I mean, I think if we're gonna do that, then have all of them come in, because, and I'm just saying.
I don't want to withdraw.
I'm not trying to.
We're good.
Tell you what to do, I'm just saying.
Just ask the question, good?
Yeah, I made the motion, and I'm fine with, you know, moving it forward. Like I said, they asked for two, it's justifiable, their explanation is valid.
Just the demands placed on them.
That's right.
Yeah, no, I get it.
I get it.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna approve three on the police and then not consider one for them.
No, it's fair, I get it. But, you know, the fact is, we asked a bunch of questions about every new ad, and all, that's what we were supposed to do. We're supposed to, you know, vet it out and discuss, and we did. So, I will now call to a vote. Michaela?
Yes.
Mr. Whedon?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Okay.
14, you have to hold.
14, we have to wait.
Yep. That's what that blank mark is for, right? Article 15, we're good?
Yep.
To see if the town will vote to appropriate $636,113 to establish a budget for the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund for the fiscal year 2025, with said appropriation to be funded through the current balance of the fund or take any other action relating thereto. The explanation is, the Department of the Revenue requires the town to establish and appropriate the yearly budget based on estimated expenditures from the fund for the next fiscal year. Total budget voted may not exceed the current balance within the fund.
A motion to approve and recommend.
Okay, I have a first, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, first and second, any discussion? Not hearing any. David?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Article 16, I think we can.
Yeah, we can do. It's a revolving fund.
Okay. Article 16, towards the bottom of page 19, is to see if the town will vote to authorize the total expenditures for the following revolving funds pursuant general law, section 44, oh, chapter 44, section 53E and a half, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, to be expended in accordance with the bylaw, establish said revolving funds, therefore approved, or take any other action relating thereto. And it's, the fund is the recreation, $625,000, library, $20,000, senior center, $25,000, historical commission is $2,500.
Motion to recommend and approve.
I have a first, do I have a second?
Second.
First and second, any discussion?
What was the 625? Is that in the explanation?
The recreation.
No, I get that, but is there some, a little bit more justification than recreation?
It's out of the revolving fund, so.
They can only spend.
Rodney, is that, is that like kids, is that the kids' club revolving?
Yes.
No, it is?
No, kids' club is after this.
Yes, but the funds have to be, not to exceed, and I think if you see, the kids' club does not exceed that. So, it's her revolving account, that's recreation, that's the account that takes in all the tennis and saw.
Oh, no, oh, hold on. Because I thought, because I got a little note, kids' club is, is that 17?
Article 17.
Yes.
So, this is all of the stuff that do.
That's in and out.
That's in and out.
So, it's all, because she makes the money and buy the programs, and this is.
Yes, it's all, it's all in and out.
It's all in, it's in and out, okay.
Yep.
Does that make sense to everybody? So, they bring in the money and it's, but they have to.
Spend it in the program.
It's all part of the program.
It's all of her programs.
Self-funded.
And there's a long list, and I don't know them all off the top of my head, but it's not costing us.
The rest.
It's all I needed to hear.
David, that includes pickleball programs, by the way. On the record.
Yeah, but you're paying.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah.
It raises money for pickleball training.
The next article is the kids' club.
Yes, you are correct.
Pickleball plug, when I can. Article 16?
17.
No, that, Article 16.
We have to vote on.
Yeah, did I get a motion and a second?
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? Michaela?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And 17 is revolving, typically, it's about the kids' club. To see if the town will vote to appropriate $532,125 for the appropriation of the Kids' Club Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 2025, such sums to be raised from $532,125 in receipts of the enterprise, or take any other action relating thereto. Again, this is in and out.
Motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
First and second, any other discussion? Not hearing any. David?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
And I think she's got some of those programs at the kids' club, but whatever, I'm not familiar with all of them.
Article 18.
Yep, we can do that one.
I don't think there's any problem with that one. Article 18, the bottom of page 20, which is to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $40,000 from the Community Preservation Fund budget for appropriation reserves pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 5, to the Community Preservation Committee Administrative and Operating Expense Account, including necessary costs and expenses relating thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action relating thereto. And does anybody need the explanation?
Motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
I have first and second, any discussion? Not hearing any. Michaela?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. 19, looks like we can.
We can do that.
Look at, yep. All right, top of page 21, Article 19, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $74,160 from the Community Preservation Fund, 10% open space recreation reserves to in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40B, Section 5, for the purpose of funding and heritage park improvement Phase II project, 520 Main Street, Parcel 27, including necessary costs and expenses relating thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action relating thereto.
Motion to approve and recommend Article 19.
Second. This really needs to be done. They need to upgrade the concession building. It's really in poor condition, and storage for the equipment.
Yeah, that's.
It's really needed.
It's long time coming.
It's used very well.
Yeah.
And DPW provides the labor for all of them.
There you go.
Further justification?
That's right.
Carol, we already approved it.
I know. I'm just, you know, enhancing that article. So, you have a motion to approve and a second.
And second. No further discussion?
No.
I was just waiting till you were done, Carol.
Oh, okay. I'm done.
David?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right.
This one's also good.
Article 20. Yeah, we can do this, right? Yeah. All right. And this is submitted by the Board of Health. Article 20, the bottom of page 21, is to see if the town will vote to continue participation in the Community Septic Management Program and the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust for the purpose of making loans to residents of the town for repairing and/or upgrading residential septic systems pursuant to agreements between the Board of Health and residential property owners, including all costs incidental or relating thereto, or take any other action relating thereto.
Motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
All right, first and second, any other discussion? Not hearing any. Michaela?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. That last sentence is, there's a thereto, and then there's a thereto relating thereto, like, okay, stop. Tongue twisters.
We can do 21, please.
Article 21. All right, the top of page 22. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to authorize Select Board to grant EverSource Energy its respective successors and assigns its respective successors and assigns a non-exclusive easement conveying the right to relocate, relocate, erect, construct, reconstruct, install, operate, maintain, patrol, inspect, repair, replace.
I have to put all those words.
Alter, change the location of, extend or remove primary wires, transformers, poles, and conduits, together with service conductors and other necessary equipment and apparatus along upon, under, across, and over a certain parcel of land situated at 380 Asher's Path, Mashpee, as further described and shown on Mashpee Assessors Maps, Map 61, and as Lot 3, on a plan of land recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 161, Plan 39, and Plan Book 172, Page 87, and to authorize the Select Board to execute all instruments and do all things necessary to carry out the provisions of this article or take any other action relating, action relating thereto.
A motion to approve.
Don't ask me to reread that one.
And recommend.
Under, over, above.
It has to grant an easement to EverSource to provide electricity to 380 Asher's Path.
That's it.
I mean.
That's the sewer.
The sewer.
That's for the sewer.
We signed a license for it. We had to put this on our next available.
To make it happen.
Yes.
It's really housekeeping.
I know.
First?
A second.
Okay. All right, first, second, any discussion?
Yeah, for me, I don't know, I just, I do, I get that. I mean, that's, that's the way it's framed, but I mean, I guess I would have questions because, I mean, it sounds like we're not just limiting them to upgrades, it's essentially given a cob launch to revamp. They could essentially upgrade that whole substation to more than what's there now, is what it sounds like.
Yeah, I'm not a lawyer, as you know, and this was written by one.
Yeah, I think this causes me hesitation, because, like, I mean, it's a cob launch.
Yeah, but this has been reviewed by our council.
I mean, just listening to what it's saying.
I mean, I've read it myself, and the way I read it is, whatever it takes to get the job done.
Job done, they put in.
And whatever is all stated, any possibility is stated in this article, they gotta get the job done, and they, we're authorizing them to get it done.
I'm more than happy to get a little bit more clarity from.
You change the location of, extend or remove primary wires, transformers, poles, conduits, I mean, that's a whole lot of, that's a whole, they put everything but the kitchen sink in here. That causes some hesitation, I mean, for me, just because, I mean, I have additional issues with EverSource and the utility right-ofways in Mashpee, anyway.
Put it on hold and let us get some.
Oh, I don't, I don't.
No, we'll, we'll get some specific clarity from council on your concerns, and then we'll come back. We've got plenty of time.
There's no one, no one's in the room for EverSource.
Are you from EverSource? No.
No.
This is the same one we did for Blue Sky.
For Blue Sky, for the tower.
And we, in fact, our attorney said we already had this exact thing in there, only they weren't recognizing the underground. And we had, we were going. And we had, we were going underground with the power, so that's the only difference, but it's certainly, we can hold it, it's not a, you know, whatever you want to do.
Because I guess that triggers some thought that Mashpee and Falmouth have a policy that power lines don't have to be reviewed for archaeology in Mashpee or Falmouth, that I think the only two towns in the Commonwealth that do that. And it's as long as the power lines are doing maintenance-related work that I have issue with because a lot of these power lines were put in place before the archaeological requirements were in place as regulatory statutes. So like all over the state, they do this work, but in Mashpee and Falmouth, they don't have to because there's some town local level policy that says they don't. Everywhere else understands the need for it and so I take issue with that and I don't like it, I'd like us to rescind that, that policy to require any and all justifiable archaeological investigations when they're doing upgrades like everywhere else in the Commonwealth. And so I'm not going to give them a cob lunch on this one. Because whenever they're doing ground disturbance, a lot of people, and it's because of my day job, I understand the, what goes into that, that there's always potential for encountering burials and archaeological sites. And so that sort of thing needs to be factored in whenever ground disturbance is being done and that's an additional hesitation for me to do a cob lunch on this.
So, Mr. Chair, put it on hold and then what we'll do is we'll get clarity on this, but also to see if we can incorporate any language that would be satisfactory.
Okay. Well, boss, I just want them to realize that you've already signed a license that says the exact same thing. So you, I mean, we can certainly do it the time and, and I'm not trying to interfere with that, but I just want to let you know you've already signed the license.
Yeah, I mean, we're, it's just, it'd be one, we'll look at it next meeting and, you know, if there's. So Article twenty-one, we have on hold, and we only have a couple holds, I mean. Article twenty-two is.
It's good.
Yeah, we can go with that. Article twenty-two, in the middle of page twenty-two also, to see if the town of Mashpee will accept the provisions of Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three F in one half. Wow, it sounds like Harry Potter. The Massachusetts General Law established the Department of Wastewater Management as the enterprise fund effective fiscal year 2026 or take any other action relating thereto.
So this is going to be the enterprise fund that's going to fund the whole project, what's coming in will be paid out.
Over time, yes.
Right, okay.
This is setting up the account so that when we start receiving those funds, they can go into it. So we have to set up the count prior to.
Motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
Okay, first and second, any other discussion?
I have, I have a question. So this allows us to do this in fiscal year 2026, but we may, we may, it won't be functioning as a true enterprise fund at that point?
No.
Okay, thank you.
No, it wouldn't be.
No, okay.
Until.
Well.
Just need to set up.
We just set it up, but I'm just thinking it couldn't be an enterprise, function as an enterprise account at that time, okay.
All right.
I don't have any other questions.
Anybody else? David?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Michaela?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
And you can do twenty-three.
Twenty-three, this is a whole.
That one looks like it's ready.
It's giving the enforcement.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, I want to approve something.
This is a good one because it will manage the stormwater runoff from the surfaces of their properties such as roofs, parking lots, and this way they, there will be fines and violation and there'll be enforcement of it.
Discharging into roadways and flood.
Exactly, exactly.
You have to mitigate the water on site.
I mean, this has environmental.
Right.
Benefits.
Considerations as well.
Exactly, this is what we've been trying to, yes. A motion to approve and recommend Article twenty.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Second.
Just, I'm, I'm good with doing that, I'm just curious, well, I guess under discussion, who submitted the article? All right, can we just add that just for, thank you.
Yeah, because it doesn't.
Yeah, no problem.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
All right, so we have a first and second, any of the discussion for Article twenty-three?
I think this is, I think it's consistent with recommendations in the stormwater management plan.
It is.
So I don't know, I don't know if that language should be included in the explanation for justification to sell it to the residents of the town.
It might make it a lot clearer and it shows that it's part of a comprehensive plan.
I think, I think some of our, some of our bylaws and things are antiquated and I think this is bringing in consistent with current regulations under the storm, revised stormwater management plan. So I think something to that effect would help in the justification and explanation.
We'll add it.
So under, so can we have that, an additional comment? So with that, with that additional statement wording, we have a first and a second, any other discussion?
Just that wording and submitted by DP.
We'll, we'll add submitted by.
Both correct, both will be added and correct.
Excellent.
Michaela?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
This article would authorize indoor recreation facilities.
I think, didn't DPW also, I mean, Natural Resources even also support that last article?
Article twenty-four.
Twenty-three.
You mean twenty-three.
Is to see if the town will vote to.
It was submitted.
Wait, hold on.
I think Ashley supported it.
Yes. Yes.
All right, so on the bottom of page twenty-three, Article twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to amend Section one seventy-four dash twenty-five B eighteen of the Mashpee zoning bylaws table of use regulations by adding the letters SP in the column identified in I dash one as follows. Indoor recreation in eighteen, I believe the correction is going to be, are adding indoor recreational facilities such as bowling alleys, miniature golf, batting cages, computerized golf or similar simulated sports, video gaming, billiards, aerobics, health clubs, dance or gymnastics studios, skating rinks, indoor go-kart facilities, swimming pools, tennis or racket clubs, et cetera, by the special permit for the planning board. And it's, the explanation is it would authorize the indoor recreational facility in I dash one zoning district by special permit currently indoor recreational facilities are authorized in only the commercial zoning districts. So.
A motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
So I have first and second, any discussion?
Sometimes we should read the explanation instead of the article.
I know.
Because the article is so confusing. And the explanation says what it is.
Yep.
So the only change is we're adding this to industrial, correct?
Yep.
Thanks.
That's.
All that to say.
I know, it's crazy.
All right, so first, second, any other? David?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Kayla?
And I'm a yes.
Hold on, twenty-five?
And twenty-six.
We can do twenty-six.
Yep, all right, so second half of page twenty-four, Article twenty-six, to see if the town will vote to extend the duration of Article number twenty voted on May second, twenty twenty-two, special town meeting for an additional three years, which was for Santuit Pond Resiliency Projects in Stormwater Improvements within the Santuit Pond watershed and to appropriate and transfer the sum of sixty-seven thousand one hundred twenty dollars from the revenue available for appropriate appropriation to local match to the grant received for said project or take any other related action thereto.
Motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
Second.
I have first and second, any other discussion? Michaela?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Twenty-seven.
We can do it.
Okay. Twenty-seven, top of twenty, page twenty-five, is to see if the town will vote to authorize the town of Mashpee acting through its school committee to enter into a memorandum of understanding, MOU, with the Massachusetts Executive Office of Health and Human Services, EO HHS, Massachusetts Department of Children and Families, DSF, DCF, and the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESE, under the Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA, in order to permit the school department to submit claims for reimbursement of the transportation expenses incurred by the school department for transporting students in foster care whereby children in foster care are required to remain in their school of origin if it is deemed to be in the best interest of the child. The reimbursement funds shall be deposited to the town of Mashpee general fund or take any other action relating thereto.
Motion to approve and recommend.
Second.
All right, first and second, any discussion?
Where do the funds come from? I mean, it's only, it's only maybe on the funds through the title.
It's all through state.
Title four E, it looks like.
Would you like to clarify?
When I hear general fund, I support.
They love the acronyms though, don't they?
They do, so this is an opportunity for the town of Mashpee to get reimbursement from the state, right now, we're not eligible for it because we have not had this warrant article, they started reimbursing in two thousand nineteen, Mashpee hasn't been eligible until twenty twenty-three and it's not a guaranteed reimbursement, it's only if we have foster care expenditures and transportation. If we do have that in the fiscal year, the following March, the school department will fill out forms to get that reimbursement and then it will go into the town's funds.
But it does say that they've developed a methodology that could reimburse a share.
Yes.
Of these costs, so it's not even looking for a full reimbursement.
No, for the last few years, it's been about twenty percent. It's not significant dollars and it's not significant dollars for the town of Mashpee right now, but there's no cost to us to do this and if someday that there is an influx of expenditures, we could recoup twenty percent.
Great, thank you so much.
Still some work.
Do I, do I have a first and second?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Not hearing any? David?
Yes.
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 And I'm a yes.
The next one's a petition article, instead of reading the article itself, read the explanation.
Well, and again, a petition article, so.
I know, but we, we do, just read the explanation.
Explanation, this article authorizes the town to complete the private to public road conversion process for Chickadee Road, Debbie Lane, Manitoba Road, Metacomet Road, no, Hoyden Road, Nish, Nishoby, Nishoby Road, Pontiac Road, Somerset Road, Whamisit Road and Whipper Will Circle. Do I have a?
A motion to approve and recommend.
Do I have a second? Just a rotating.
Of course, this is going to come back on our DPW.
Well, yeah, I mean.
More work, but I mean, they pay for it, they're paying for it.
But did we have a public hearing on this?
I'm guessing we probably already did a while ago, because I remember Whipper Will as being part of one.
I do too.
They were here then.
Well, oh, that was the one we.
It seems familiar, but.
Standing room only.
Right, right.
The whole neighborhood showed up.
But there was some questions around it as to like, who's going to pay for the upgrades to make it current, are they going to take it down, you know, are they going to rework the roads to put them in, because I think those roads were put in before, you had to have structural fill and all that.
Oh, yeah, it's got to come up to today's standards.
Catch basins where, like, you know, you got to do all that, so who's going to pay for that during this taking? Do we put that on the onus on the residents of the neighborhood before we take it over?
It's all on them.
They're supposed to get it up to standard, but just to remind you, that was a conflicted discussion.
Sure.
So I don't know how that's going to come out.
And again, that's, to get here, they had to have majority, so.
Yes, but I'm just saying, I'm not going to project how that's going to turn out.
No, it's.
And it's a petition article.
And it's all on them, the cost doesn't affect anybody but if you live on those streets. So.
And I think the cost was quite high, too.
Almost three million dollars.
I don't think they had.
You can vote to take no action, it's a petition.
It's a petition article, so, I mean, we don't have to take a position.
Did, did they have the majority?
They did.
Had to in order to.
Can I have any questions at all, Rob?
Oh, you're the petitioner, okay.
I'm still not predicting how that's going to turn out.
They had more time petition two than we had time petition one, so.
Oh, well, that's good.
So does anybody have, do we have a, do we have a motion?
I gave, I, motion to approve and recommend.
I'll second.
All right, petition to approve and recommend Article twenty-eight, so we have any other discussion? Not hearing any. Michaela?
Think of environmental impact, yes.
Okay. Carol?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
More justification for public works.
I know, another one.
There's a tremendous amount of runoff there.
Yeah, it is.
Well, that's, that's in a sensitive area anyway, so.
Runoff into sensitive areas.
No question.
Yep.
So I support it.
I'd like to make a motion to that little line down there at the very bottom, motion to adjourn.
A second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.